We're doing all this first through the chief doing his.
Whatever, whatever you want to do. I mean, where is?
He's over here.
Yeah, I wanted to say something.
He said he.
Right, right. So, we need to check with Gary. I want to say something about the, uh...
Not on yet.
I wanted to say something about, uh, Rob Flynn as well.
Just make sure your own. You're good.
Stay off the road.
Hey, Dave.
You want us to read the proclamation first? Okay, I just wanted to get the order.
Really? No, I'm actually from a... He's got it out. He said, uh, he said, uh, please, uh, don't consider me changing. We have a looking for your character, your version, people from now on. It was that way.
We not pushing them. Why?
Did you talk to him? Huh? Did you?
I just saw.
See, I didn't. I didn't know. Clean up.
She would have stood there and then knocked.
I can see these guys. You.
Exactly. Pete, you ready?
Yeah.
We on?
We're on.
We're on. Good evening, and welcome to the Township of Lacy Caucus meeting, January twenty-second, two thousand fifteen. Addictive notice of this meeting is beginning in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act pursuant to public laws nineteen seventy-five. Said notice was advertised in the Lacy Beacon and was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and the place of the meeting. We're going to begin tonight with a salute to the flag and a moment of silence in memory of Detective Scott Stevens.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have a special presentation tonight. Uh, we're going to be presenting a proclamation to Sergeant Trans, who recently retired and is the only officer in here with a smile on his face right now, so... I'm going to ask Veronica to read it, and then we'll make the presentation. We also have a presentation from the chief, uh, following that, so Veronica?
Whereas the Township of Lacy wishes to honor James A. Trans for his twenty-seven years of service to the township and its residents. Whereas James A. Trans began his career with the Ocean Township Police Department in nineteen eighty-seven, and then transferring to the Lacy Township Police Department in nineteen eighty-nine as a full-time patrolman. Whereas James A. Trans was promoted to sergeant on September twenty-fifth, two thousand and three. Whereas on January seventh, two thousand and eight, James A. Trans was assigned to the Investigative Services Division as detective sergeant in charge of the department's juvenile unit until October of two thousand and nine, and worked as a patrol sergeant from two thousand and nine until two thousand and fourteen. Whereas James A. Trans has initiated the Cops Cards Collectible Program in two thousand, the inaugural Juvenile Police Academy in two thousand and nine organized the annual Breakfast with Santa for the past twenty-two years, and was involved with the Alive at Twenty-Five program, the Municipal Alliance, and served as a juvenile, served on the Juvenile Conference Committee. Whereas James A. Trans served as president, vice president, treasurer, and trustee for the police unions. Whereas James A. Trans is an avid bicyclist and has been a participant in the Police Unity Tour to raise awareness of law enforcement officers who've died in the line of duty, making the trip from New Jersey to Washington, D.C. on several occasions. And whereas Jimmy also enjoys golfing, riding his Harley, painting, photography, abstract art, as well as traveling, and is a Buffalo Bills and Philadelphia Phillies fan. Whereas Jimmy has three children, Courtney, James, and Kevin, and has been married to his wife Christine for three years. And whereas James A. Trans is esteemed by his friends, colleagues, and residents of the township as a concerned and conscientious employee of the township whose dedication to duty and professional excellence have brought pride to his community. Now therefore, I, Gary Quinn, mayor of the Township of Lacy, do on behalf of myself and the Township Committee hereby honor and congratulate James A. Trans, commend him for his many valuable years of service, and extend best wishes on his retirement with continued success and happiness.
On behalf of the governing body, you know, I want to congratulate you. I didn't think this day would come like this. Jim has done, I've known him many, many years. I've known his mom, your mom, taught my children. You've certainly had a fantastic career. You've done a fantastic job to the residents of this town. When I walked in here tonight, I looked at him, and I go, is that Darmody here tonight? You look relaxed. You look like you're really going to enjoy yourself, so we truly wish you the best. You know, you've done a fantastic job. Very proud to have you, you know, the time that we had you. To your family, to your wife, you know, start enjoying it, because, see, any police officer gives up a tremendous amount, and it's a lot of hurt on a family, so, so, it's your time now, so you have to enjoy yourself. And the chief has a presentation now, so.
I am very proud to be able to present you with this plaque, and I'm honored to call you a friend. You had a great career, and just to express, this man here did so much for Lacy Township. When the proclamation reads that, that he started the initial Cops Collectible Card Program, that was on his shoulders. He took on the burden and brought that to Lacy Township, a great program. The Junior Police Academy in two thousand and nine, the single best program ever run through the Lacy Township Police Department, a model for the rest of the county and other departments throughout the state, and I commit to you that we're going to bring that back to Lacy Township. It was a shame that didn't continue. That's going to continue. The public enjoyed it. It was a great experience for the kids who were involved, and, and that's something that you can take pride in now and in the future, and know that you started it. You brought it here. The, uh, Police Unity Tour and Lacy Township's participation, the individual officers who have participated, you led the way with that. You brought that to Lacy Township. You participated, and officers have followed. So, as we have fifteen now, fifteen retirements over the last five and a half years, you made fifteen. We've hired ten new officers out of the fifteen that have left. There are ten new officers in this room that now I challenge them to carry the torch and do the things that Sergeant Trans has done in his career to bring pride to the police department, bring to this community something special above and beyond what we do on a daily basis. So, thank you so much again. This is just a simple card signed by all your colleagues. Uh, thanks so much. If you take that as well.
Could you picture you, him, his wife, and the mayor?
That'd be great.
And then after that, everyone in this family?
Yeah, I was going to say, Mom's dead. Kind of had an impact.
That's for sure. Let me just shift over this way. Sorry, should I be dead center? Perfect. Thank you.
Not done yet.
Everybody ready?
Yep, we're all set.
And one more time. Thank you.
Thanks. So, the committee, like to say a few words. Peter?
Yes, I, being a new committeeman, I was not aware of some of those things that Officer Trans has taken on, in particular, the baseball cards. Uh, I think that, you know, I had, I had never seen that in any municipality until I moved to Lacy Township. And I've seen them in our stores, on kids' bikes. I've seen them posted around town. Uh, and most importantly, I think, I have seen them with most of the police officers that are here today at our middle school on Denton Avenue during that outreach program, which I think is so vitally important. Because I, I really want, as, as somebody in prevention, to have that first, that, that first outreach with a police officer, to be a good one. And I think that's what that day brings, and I think the cards were a conduit for that to happen. So, I want to thank you for all your service. I'm glad you made it. I hope you live a happy and long life, and I appreciate the words our chief said about you, and, and thank you very much.
Thanks, Peter. Nikki?
Jim, I want to congratulate you. All your years of service. I've known you a long time here, and with, with the police cards, I, I participated in it for the first time you did it when I started with you. I want to thank you for your years of service, and, you know, we really appreciate it. Thank you, and good luck.
Mr. Kennis?
Yeah, I too. Also want to thank you for your many years of service to the township, and also to thank your family for allowing me the time to serve, uh, while on duty away from home. Uh, good luck in your retirement.
Like the chief said, big shoes to fill. I look, I looked down the line at, you know, the guys I know for a long time, and I know what they give into this town, and of course, you're one of them, and guys, I, I have all the confidence in the world that with the, the people you have to look up to here and, and the history of, of men like Sergeant Trans, we, the Lacy future is bright. Jim, enjoy your life. All of you, enjoy your life and enjoy him. Thank you.
Jim, you've left a great legacy here, and, you know, certainly go out of here and, you know, remember, you've always had an impact on everything that's going on. Uh, you've been a major part of this department, you know, looking around the room, seeing all the men and women here tonight, show the support that they have for you and the support you've had for them over the years, so... We, we truly are going to miss you, but we are very happy that you're going to have the opportunities ahead of you that you do have, and, uh, we wish you the best and get out there and enjoy it, so, thanks for everything. We truly appreciate it. I know Mr. Curatello has a few comments you want to talk about, make comment about one or two of the other officers?
I do. First off, it's, you know, to see the, what basically is the entire force here tonight to support the other brothers on the force is a statement in, in and of itself. Um, I want to talk specifically about the Kimberly Smith Ames Award. And a brief background for the people in attendance that don't know. Ms. Ames was killed by a drunk driver who was unlicensed and uninsured on October seventh, nineteen ninety-eight. Uh, she was also three months pregnant at that time, uh, and it's a very sad situation. And, um, so at the Ocean County Highway Traffic Safety Officers Association meeting, was decided some years ago to give an award in her name. Uh, and when officers, usually from just the traffic units, attend that monthly meeting at our prosecutor's office, uh, I get to see it. I'm fortunate enough to be there. I give a brief report on behalf of the county as a civilian, of course. Uh, but, you know, with thirty-two municipalities and police departments much larger and some smaller than this, officers from this department have received the Kimberly Smith Ames Award, an award in her name, and that means something. And I think it's emblematic of the leadership. Uh, it's emblematic of the education and prevention and outreach, and so I want to congratulate personally, um, officers Michael Verway and Dimitri Sarnus for winning that award back-to-back for Lacy Township and the police department, and I think that deserves an honorable mention and a round of applause. I also want to mention Officer Robert Flynn. Officer Flynn, uh, last year, uh, was selected by his peers on that association, uh, people that represent departments from across our county, uh, to sit on their executive board. Uh, so I think that, it, it just says a lot, you know, to have three officers in that room in our county prosecutor's office, uh, to be either on an executive board or to be honored with this really unbelievable award in Kimberly Smith Ames. Uh, again, it's emblematic of the leadership and the senior leadership, um, down to the first and the, and the junior patrolmen. Uh, I'm, I'm very proud to give an honorable mention to, uh, those folks here tonight and to our department as a whole. I really appreciate it, everyone. Thank you.
And again, to our entire department here tonight, uh, we want to thank you as a governing body, you know, for all your hard work and dedication to, to the residents of Lacy Township. You know, we, we don't recognize all of you as much as we should, uh, but we certainly know what goes on. We know that you're doing an outstanding job, uh, with the leadership of Chief Apparata and the, um, staff he has, you know, put in place. Uh, you know, we, we certainly, without a doubt, have the best police department in the state of New Jersey, and we're very proud of that, and, you know, we, we seem to see, just keep getting better. So, Dave, thank you for all your hard work. Jimmy, start enjoying yourself, and to the rest of you, thank you very much for coming out tonight and for all the hard work and the dedication to the residents. And at this point, what I'll do is I'll take a five-minute break so that you guys can leave. You don't have to stick around for all the other stuff. Thanks again, guys.
Congratulations. I'm envious.
Jimmy, thanks for everything. Go, go enjoy.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Yeah, he's awesome. That's all I need.
Thanks, John.
Oh, you broke it.
Broke the attorney's name.
Slide your name in there. Take care of yourself, dude.
You're not going inside of here. Huh?
He looks so...
Yeah.
He's having a Thursday's, actually.
Good.
We gotta get the kid a lot of credit.
Well, it's a lesson. I mean, it was slow, but it was all good.
Bye, Mrs. Trans. Good to see you, Tim. I just want to get out of here some night, too. I'm just very envious of him, and he's getting to go before me. Well, good. I must have had some good teachers in my life. That's right. The first teacher's always the best.
I love it. I love it.
Take cares. Bye now. Okay, item number two. One-day social affairs permit at Lacy Elks Lodge, May ninth, two thousand fifteen.
The Elks is running an event where they are extending open invitations to non-members, and they're having, um, alcohol for a cigar dinner, and they need permission to, um, have the one-day social affairs permit signed off by myself and the chief.
Item motion? Move it. Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Any add-ons?
I have no add-ons, and at this point...
I'd like to bring something up. We had talked numerous times in the past, um, about having a light put at Lake Barnacle Drive in Haynes. Um, it's, over the years, there've been a number of serious accidents there. Also, we've had many complaints about speeding, uh, so I'd like, uh, to see if we can explore that.
All right, I would, I, um, the way that the DOT works now is that the town has to hire their own engineer or solicit an engineering firm to make a traffic study and see if it warrants, um, a traffic light there versus the DOT used to do it for you in the past, but they don't, so...
So, what do we have to get a bid for?
Well, I'll get some quotes, um, because I'm sure it will be under the, um, bidding threshold from a couple of engineers, and we'll make a determination from that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Before we do that, maybe we should reach out to, um, one of our engineers on staff and see if, because of the proximity of Route Nine, whether we have a shot at it. I, I agree. I think we need it desperately, but the last time we, we had talked to him about it, Walmart was too close to the, you know, corner, but I, it's just getting worse.
Well, you know, we, we thought the same thing with Taylor Lane, and we got the light there.
Let's move that one up there.
Well, I'd like, I'd like to, but, you know, um, if you don't ask, you don't get. You know, basically, uh, it, as long as you can reach out to whoever we can to determine if we, we have the chance, you know, I don't want to spend the money if the answer is no. But if the answer is maybe, um, I, I know for years the answer was going to be no for Taylor Lane, and when we finally, you know, pushed the, the subject, we got one.
And that would be a municipal-owned traffic light, and the municipality would be responsible for buying and installing the whole thing. It would not be county or state-owned, so...
Well, you know, over the...
Just so, just so you know that.
I understand, but over the years, you know, there's been a number of serious accidents there, and, and I've had a number of residents, and I'm talking about quite a few residents in the Cranberry Hill and, and across, you know, north of there, uh, tell me that it's, and from my personal experience, it's a very, very dangerous intersection.
Yeah, there's no doubt about it.
Okay, so get some numbers, and we'll reach out to, um, Stanton's office. Item number three. Resolution two thousand fifteen sixty-one, authorizing the convenient...
I don't think we're going to need that tonight, no.
So, can I have a motion to adjourn the caucus?
Move it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We're going to jump right into our regular meeting. Okay. Addictive notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act pursuant to public laws nineteen seventy-five. Said notice was advertised in the Ansberry Park Press in the Lacy Beacon and was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and the place of the meeting. We're going to begin with a salute to the flag and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item number one. Second reading of ordinance two thousand fifteen zero-one, setting various salaries.
Norton to the Township of Lacy, County, Ocean State, New Jersey, amending an ordinance to the title, and ordinance to the Township of Lacy, County, Ocean State, New Jersey, affixing and determining the salaries, wages, and compensations to the officers, employees, and members of the governing body of the township. This is setting the salaries for the CFO, the assistant CFO, and the township administrator. It's second reading.
Being the second reading, I'll open it to the floor if there's any public comment. Can I motion to close the floor?
Motion.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion on the ordinance?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatello?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes, item number two. Resolution two thousand fifteen sixty-three, appointing a part-time winter laborer for snow season.
Resolution to Township of Lacy, County, Ocean State, New Jersey, authorizing the employment of s- snow-season laborers for the Department of Public Works. This is, um, a high school student. We hire various, um, students over the course of the seasons, uh, to help with the various things, such as snow shoveling.
Can I have a motion?
Move, move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Curatello?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes, item number three. Resolution two thousand fifteen sixty-four, appointing adult school crossing guards.
Resolution to Township of Lacy, County, Ocean State, New Jersey, appointing substitute school crossing guards for the Township of Lacy. This is Margaret Davis and Anthony Menunez.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatello?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes, item number four. Resolution two thousand fifteen sixty-five, authorizing the execution of a grant agreement for the Municipal Alliance Program.
Resolution to Township of Lacy, County, Ocean State, New Jersey, authorize the execution of a grant agreement with the County of Ocean for the Municipal Alliance Program. This is for the next fiscal year, starting July first, two thousand fifteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand sixteen. The, uh, anticipated amount is thirty-two thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatello?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes, item number five. Resolution two thousand fifteen sixty-six, authorizing the execution of a grant agreement for the Ocean County Tourism Grant.
Resolution to Township of Lacy, County, Ocean State, New Jersey, authorize the execution of grant application with the County of Ocean for the Ocean County Tourism Grant. We use, um, the grant money to offset advertising for the Municipal Alliance, um, five-k run and one-mile fun run.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatello?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes, item number six. Resolution two thousand fifteen sixty-seven, authorizing the filing of the Municipal Recycling Tonnage Grant.
Resolution to Township of Lacy, County, Ocean State, New Jersey, authorizing the filing of a Municipal Recycling Tonnage Grant application with the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection. This is the annual tonnage grant that we get. This is based on last year's numbers, um, for the two, twenty-fourteen year.
Can I motion?
Move it.
Motion. Second.
Mr. Curatello?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes, item number seven. Resolution two thousand fifteen sixty-eight, authorizing the release of deposit money.
Resolution to Township of Lacy, County, Ocean State, New Jersey, authorize the release of deposit money to help for the use of municipal facilities.
Can I motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatello?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes, item number eight. Resolution two thousand fifteen sixty-nine, authorizing the payment of township bills.
Resolution to Township of Lacy, County, Ocean State, New Jersey, authorize the payment of township bills in the amount of six million, fifty-six thousand, two hundred and seventy-four dollars and sixty-eight cents.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatello?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes, item number nine. Most to approve township meeting minutes of January eighth, two thousand fifteen.
Move it.
Second. All in favor?
Abstain.
Item number ten. Most to approve caucus meeting minutes of January eighth, two thousand fifteen.
Move it.
Second. All in favor?
Abstain.
Item number eleven. Most to approve membership in the Lenoka Harbor Fire Company for Gray Barcey?
Move it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Item number twelve. Most to approve Raffle License Application for the Ocean County Shrine Ladies Club, the Lacy Elks Charitable Foundation, the Lacy Soccer Club, and the Lacy Middle School Parent Teacher Council.
Move it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any add-ons?
No.
Okay, committee comments. Uh, Mr. Curatello?
Yes, Mayor. I'd like to, uh, send out a thank you to, uh, our superintendent, especially our principal at our high school. Uh, about a month ago, I had, uh, been contacted by the prosecutor's office, uh, for attendance and to spread the word about an event, playing it safe. Uh, that event took place, uh, this pa, on the fifteenth of this month, and I, I have to say that, um, Mr. Hanshu and Mr. Faulkner, Ms. Rand, everybody that was involved, our athletic director at the high school. Uh, I believe in looking at the crowd, uh, that there were more students from Lacy Township High School there, uh, at that event at the Pine Belt Arena than any other school. The schools, of course, were wearing their colors, uh, and it was just a sea of, uh, blue and white, uh, up in those bleachers, and, uh, I, I know that, uh, the people from the prosecutor's office were happy with that turnout, and I want to thank, uh, the good people over at the high school for helping get that word out for a cause, uh, that was indeed, uh, in the times that we live in, uh, very important. So, I think that warrants a thank you, and I'm very appreciative of it, and it's good to see our kids out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
First of all, I'd like to thank everybody up on the committee again, and Veronica, for all the help of getting me all my surroundings and, uh, getting a feel of everything, which is very good. Uh, I've been attending some classes so far. I'm really enjoying that. It's been, uh, really a, a challenge, but it's been learning a lot with that. Another thing I'd like to do, I'd like to thank, uh, all the volunteers in the town. We just had a, we just went to the Lenoka Harbor, um, Fire Company Installation Dinner, and, uh, it, it was amazing how them people, they all stay together there, and, and I know a lot of them, and, uh, they really, um, we're lucky to have people like that to do that in the town. Um, another thing I'd like to mention, uh, I was speaking to my wife tonight. We have a, uh, kind of a celebrity in the town, um, uh, Nico Lacandra. He's a, he's a two thousand and seven graduate of Lacy Township and a graduate of, uh, Seton Hall with a master's degree in athletic training. He's, uh, he's been, uh, in the town for all of his life. He is now off to the Super Bowl. He's the trainer for the, uh, New England Patriots. Um, so he's signed up for two years, so he's off to there, so I want to wish it, you know, tell his family, congratulations on that real good thing. Um, that's about it, Mayor. That's...
Thank you, Nick. Mr. Kennis?
Uh, yeah, I'd just like to wish, uh, to express my deepest empathy to the Stevens family. Uh, Scott grew up in this town, and I know his family personally. Um, I saw him a lot last year and the past few years because both our, our sons played, uh, Pop Warner football, and he coached a junior P W team, and I would just really like to wish his family the best in this most difficult time.
Thanks, Steve.
I also like to send my condolences to the Stevens family. Dawn is an employee with the police department, and I know she's got a great support system around her. Um, the outreach has been just amazing. Tragic, tragic accident just goes to show you how quickly life can change, and, um, I just hope she gets through it, and, and I wish her all the best. I was unable to attend the last township meeting, and I apologize, but I was at a very important ceremony. Um, it was an honor and a privilege to attend this ceremony. It was the induction of the National Honor Society for our high school students. I was honored because my daughter, Lindsay, was inducted, but I was privileged because what you saw was over sixty of Lacy High School's finest. And for those of you who don't know, uh, you, you, you achieve membership in the National Honor Society by achieving, um, excellence in four, the four pillars of, of the society, and those are scholarship, character, service, and leadership. And I, it's no easy task. Um, many people are invited to apply, but not everyone does. And, and the ceremony is, is very interesting because what happens is, uh, as each student is called upon the stage, they are joined by their mentor. And their mentor could be a parent, a sibling, a friend, a coach, um, a teacher, anyone, and e- each student has to write in the program what that mentor means to them. Um, and, and Sandra Brower, the superintendent, briefly mentioned some of the ones that stood out, and it, it was very touching. Um, and they get up and, and they light a candle, and again, it's a very solemn thing, a great honor, and unfortunately, many of you might not know about it because nothing was written about it in our, either one of our two, um... our two news publications, Reporter or The Patch. And there are a lot of great things that happened in this township, a lot of great students and youth and activities. And I want to task our two news outlets to start reporting on that. Start reporting on the sports organizations, the volunteers. We had the swearing-in of Lenoka Harbor Fire Company, but it's something that really should have been put at the forefront. It's local, that's local news. Let's start, let's start supporting the goodness township. I don't say hide your head about the bad. We want to know about the bad and learn from that. But, let's, let's give our youth and our parents something to look at to inspire them to participate and do better. We've got every month, we've got two seniors of the month in high school every month. And if you, if you read the resumes of these students, you'd be amazed. We've got a fantastic Eagle Scout program in Lacey Township. And the only time you really ever hear about it is when they come here and this township committee will extol the virtues of them. So, let's start hearing some good. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thanks, Mark. I also want to extend my condolences to the Stevens family. Detective Scott Stevens was a local boy, grew up here, served on the prosecutor's office for 15 years and truly was an outstanding individual. You know, he passed yesterday after a motor vehicle accident last week out in Bamber. And it's, you know, certainly left a devastating effect, not only on Scott's family, but on the community itself, our police department. As Mr. Dykoff said, you know, Scott's wife, Dawn, is one of our dispatchers in the police department. And, you know, she's, she's a great individual. She has a young son that Scott left behind. So, it's gonna be a very difficult time. I know there's a tremendous amount of support in the community for the family. And there's gonna be a funeral mass next Wednesday down in Stafford Township with the, you know, full police procession coming up from Stafford to bury Scott here in Good Luck Cemetery. So, please, you know, keep to family and your thoughts and prayers because it's something that, when a tragedy like that happens so unexpectedly, it's gonna have a long-lasting effect on a lot of people. So, but our prayers go out to them. That's all the comments I have. I'll open the floor to public comment. Ms. Moss? Could you be so kind as to take that microphone and put it in the middle?
Yes.
Thanks, Phil.
Bill Moss, Biscayne Drive, Hookett River Beach. Three things. I'm gonna go through three, ask for three things. First, I gotta remind the public about the $6 million bills this year that, keep in mind that $4,349,456 of that has gone to our schools. And the second thing I wanted to bring up, as the mayor, the grant for the rail trail. We still have it?
The grant for the rail trail, we're still in the process of trying to work out the details with the Department of Transportation. So, that's still ongoing.
Okay. The third thing I want to bring up is, as Mr. Dykoff said, the local newspapers, it would be nice if the local newspapers would stop by, for instance, the municipal alliance luncheon next Friday and meet some of the senior citizens in this town and see our councilmen there, how they attend and talk to the people, let them know what's going on in this town. The veterans organizations, the American Legion here in town, the Old Guard, who has a meeting every Monday here in town. The, let's see, what else? There's so many organizations, it's hard to say. But, they never get any publicity from these, the press. The press is like they don't even exist. Anybody, I can go to nine out of 10 people and ask them if they've heard of the American Legion here in Lacey. We've got 50-some members in Lacey and we meet in Lacey. They don't know about it. You can ask them how many people are in the Old Guard and what the Old Guard does. They don't know how the Old Guard supports their schools, their kids, their scholarships. They have no idea because the press doesn't tell them. The Veterans Association, the Vet Works, Vet Works right here in Lacey. You couldn't get any closer to something that could help a veteran more than the Vet Works. We have our own Vet, I forgot what you call it, the Vet Works here in the township where Bernie Snyder runs it for us.
The Veterans Commission.
The Veterans Commission. We get no, they get no publicity from the press. Either the Lacey Beacon, the Asbury Park Press, The Patch, the Lacey Reporter, none of them. They couldn't care less. But, if they just come to one thing, just come to it one time and see what goes on and they'll know that maybe the next time they might want to stop back and see it again. And put some pictures in the paper, let people know. That's all I have. Thank you.
One more. This Saturday, several of us are attending at the Elks. They have the annual charity ball where they do wonderful things, raise a lot of money, the Elks. And this is a great, great event they have every year. And I know the mayor will be attending. I'll be attending. Ms. Juliana will be attending.
Right. Simple things like the Elks.
It's a great thing. The Elks.
The Elks take care of and destroy American flags. They do a full presentation of it. The press couldn't care less. This is what we need in this town. We need more of it. The things our police department does when they have baseball games, not covered by the press. You know, they couldn't care less. We just need more from the press, more pictures in the press to just show what happens in Lacey Township. You know, you can always live in Lakewood. I wouldn't want to live in Lakewood and go to a ballgame at night, for sure. So, you know, have no fear here whatsoever. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Moss. Ms. Bender?
Barry Bender, Historic Bay Avenue. I'm up here representing the Berkeley Lacey Relay for Life and just wanted to let people know that on Wednesday, February 18th, snow day of February 25th, at 7:00 PM, we're gonna be having our kickoff event at Mill Pond Elementary School, right here in town. And our theme this year is Decades of Hope. So, people are gonna be basically representing different decades when we have the event in May. Different dress, like 70s or 40s or whatever. We invite everyone on the day, if they want to come to the kickoff. Again, that's the 18th, February 18th, 7:00 PM. We thank the mayor for his previous visits during our event. And the event itself this year will be Saturday, May 30th through Sunday, May 31st at Veterans Park in Bayville. As we always say, we're looking for teams, participants, cancer survivors, caregivers, event sponsors and volunteers. We started working on this probably in October. Like, we take a couple of months' rest and start over again. We also are on Facebook, Relay for Life, Berkeley slash Lacey. And if you need more information, you can contact Taranovak at taranovak@cancer.org or at 732-292-4262. And we're hoping for a real good turnout this year. I also have flyers I'd like to give to people in the audience tonight, if possible. And I want to thank you for allowing me to have this time.
Yeah. Tara had come in and met with Veronica and I last week and gave us a little bit of a background. And I didn't realize it. I know you've been doing a lot of years, but they said it's a 10-year anniversary between the two of them.
I was supposed to say that. It's our 10th year anniversary. It also happens to be the 30th anniversary of Relay for Life overall.
Yeah. Barry, can I have one of them?
Certainly can. You want one of each?
Yeah.
That's for the event and that's the kickoff.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Thank you.
Any more public comment? Yes. Just your name and address. How you doing?
Annie Channick, 427 Laurel Boulevard, Lenoka Harbor. I have been with the, sorry, I'm a little nervous. I've been doing Relay for the past 10 years. I am a cancer survivor. And I encourage as many cancer survivors to come to this event as possible because it shows that the American Cancer Society and many organizations are making progress to help us fight cancer. There are many more survivors and we need to show other people that there are people that are surviving cancer because of all the research and all the funding that is to help find cures for cancer. So, and I just want to shout out that the American Cancer Society is one of the best organizations to help fight cancer.
They've done a great job and, you know, I've participated over the last couple of years and...
Yeah, I want to thank you. I always see you there. I think I've seen Mr. Dykoff there.
Yeah. My wife is part of the school team over at Lenoka. And, you know, I know the schools put a tremendous amount of, you know, people into the Relay each year. Last year, the Pride Team, I guess it was.
Right. There are many schools, especially in Lacey, that are really involved now. And we're really excited about that. So...
Yeah. I think it's a great weekend because it's after Memorial Day and it's gonna be a little bit warmer. Because I remember some of the years, it's been a little cold out there when you get to that 10 o'clock hour. So...
Right.
But, we'll do everything we can to work with you guys and, you know, make it a success.
Thank you. And I hope everybody from, you know, the committee, if you have a chance to come to just see what we're about, it's really a great organization.
Truly is. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Relay.
Anyone else? Can I have a motion to close the floor?
Move it.
Second? Have a motion to adjourn?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, folks.